I'll call the Dixon County Commission to Order, the May 26, 2016 meeting. Please stand for the flag, Salute.
Let me introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We didn't have any additions to our agenda today, so I move that we approve our agenda.
Second it.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most would carry. The consent agenda are the minutes of the May 19 work session, the regular meeting. We had fund expenditures, we had two different funds. One was $204,699.81 and the other one was $166,792, which made a total of fund expenditures of $371,385.41. We also had a KDG wire payment of $109,273.82.
I'd move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second it.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most would carry. Commissioners comments and committee reports. Lynn, do you want to start?
Well, just a couple of things. I attended the MAC breakfast, Military Affairs Council breakfast, over at Junction City today. And then also, we do have a Kansas Association County Board meeting today. And since this was going on, I went ahead and told them I was going to miss that meeting. And I'm sure all of us certainly have the concern. Thoughts and prayers with those that have been impacted by this tornado. And I know there's going to be other comments, so that's all I have.
Craig.
3400 Avenue, I drove it after the meeting last Thursday, and I drove it Tuesday. I've got some pictures that...I should have said something before, but a 30-foot wide road, you cannot blade the two passes because I saw him doing it and stuff. Because he was leaving a windrow out in the middle about that high and stuff, and that's the weather packed down. But need to have some discussion on that and stuff. And then, like I said, I drove it Tuesday, and it needs some work. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, like I say, we were busy this morning. We did call an emergency meeting because we needed to sign a declaration of disaster in our county so that we could get that turned in. And so we had a short meeting this morning to take care of that. So we had probably let Brad talk mostly about the events last night, but like I say, we are fortunate that no one got seriously hurt or killed with all the damage that was done. You know, I think the weather reports and emergency people did an excellent job in preparing the people to take cover because they pretty much had the path the tornado was covering. And like I say, it was pretty much on the ground the whole way across northern part of Dixon County. We do have a map up here on the wall that the area that's in between those blue lines that goes across our county, there was the area that was hit. And like I say, I'll maybe let Brad explain more of the details of that when we get into his report. But like I say, there was a lot of volunteer people out helping. And like I say, I know from experience on a tornado that it does take a while to recover. We had one that hit our farm in '69, and I was very thankful for the volunteer people that came and just cleaned up. We had debris in our fields. And like I say, there's a lot of that work to be done now. So I'm sure the committee will step up and help these people. Presentations, petitions, proclamations, and other public comments, as we have none today. So Brad, why don't you go ahead and maybe fill us in on a little bit more of the details?
Okay. Well, as you know, we had a tornado last night. About seven o'clock, a tornado was torn on the belt around Minneapolis and progressed southeast and came into our county just between 2700 and 2800 Avenue. It kind of swirled across the county pretty much straight east until it got around Mankato and then it veered to the south a little bit, heading straight towards Chapman. We were very fearful at that point, but fortunately it went around the south tip of Chapman and didn't damage any homes in Chapman, to my knowledge, or nothing substantial. And was on the ground until it got out of our county. And once it got into Gary County, talking to representatives of them, it was still a pretty good cell, but it dissipated and lifted up off the ground once it got out of the county. So I don't know what it had against us, but it sure hit us with a vengeance. We had a very, very detailed response from the emergency personnel, first responders in our county during the storm, all the fire departments in the northern half of the county, sheriff's department, emergency management. We were all out in conducting the initial search and following or waking that path, checking homes. We had a number of people that were helped extricate people out of basements that were in basements, the homes that were destroyed as it went through. Fortunately, we didn't have anybody that was seriously injured that we're aware of. We had, we came back into the courthouse and then set up our emergency operations center and were able to map out last night pretty quickly with the help of our GIS department, the path of the storm. And that's essentially what you see on the board up there. In the, I'll back up just a little bit. During that initial response and the secondary response throughout the early portions of the night, we had 123 organized individuals involved in the search and rescue. That's a minimum because I know there's a number of people, myself included, that didn't get logged in because we were a little too busy. But we have a tracking system that we use in Kansas. And so we had 123 people that were logged into that and actually went out on assignments in teams and helped search different quadrants of the storm path. In the path of that storm, we had 104 homes that were located in that path. Fortunately, there were only eight homes that were either, seven of which were totally destroyed and one that was substantially damaged in the path that we're aware of this morning. We had several more that had minor damages and some partial damage, but it was what we would estimate less than 50%, 100% damage. We have, as of this morning at eight o'clock, we had accounted for everyone that resides in the path of that storm. A couple of locations took a little longer because the homes were destroyed and the people were not there. One I know was, had already relocated to some friends in another community, and one was on vacation. And the neighbors finally came over and said, "Well, they're gone, and here's their information." But we've accounted for everybody. The Red Cross did set up a shelter community center here in Abilene. And I know that they're out there again today. I don't know that they had very many takers, but they were available. They were also available out there helping to provide some food to the emergency personnel as the night wore on, which I know personally is very much appreciated. We're in the process right now of determining damage assessment. We've got teams out from the appraisers office that have gone in from the appraisal mode to the damage assessment mode. We utilize them for that. They're not out there for appraisal purposes, they're out there to help us determine the extent of the damage. The National Weather Service is also here, and they're doing their assessment to determine what the rating was of the tornado. And we're continuing to compile information. We've got the, an incident management team out at the transfer station. I think it's the northeast regions incident management team came in. So we've got experts in the emergency management field from Shawnee County, Riley County, Lyon County, a number of those areas, agencies that have come in to help us put things together and try to put the pieces together this morning and throughout today. We had a very good, very good response, very good concerted effort that's underway. And now we just have to try and put all the pieces together. But there's only one guy that's responsible for no injuries, and we've got to thank him for that. He was looking over us, I guess. We're not nervous about what this afternoon is going to bring because our weather conditions are, as I'm told, ideal for another round two. They were talking to us yesterday, giving us information that today could be worse than yesterday was as far as conditions. I don't know if that's still the case, but that's where we're at as far as the storm. So we're going to be busy.
You know, the seven that are, you know, house destroyed, don't, Brad, you know, the initial sets, but I'd say some of those ones that were, you know, damaged and stuff, you know, when the assessor gets out there and the sheet rocks damaged and stuff like that, I'd say it's probably going to be more move up than that, completely destroyed.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, ours, like I said, ours is just an initial.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And of course, throughout the day, today, I'm sure people will begin with their insurance adjusters, and they'll be coming up with better estimates. Anytime you twist a house like that, there's some strange stuff that happens that can't repair.
It can still be standing, but structurally it's not safe.
So I'm sure the numbers will probably increase, and the damage assessment's going to continue to increase. But the bottom line is, we have to replace homes, so we can't replace people. So we're just lucky that everybody walked away from it.
And I think it's always impressive, the way people in this area, you know, rally for each other and are looking out for neighbors. And I'm sure a lot of groups we don't know about are going to do a lot of volunteer things.
Absolutely. I was talking to one gentleman with a radio station, I don't know what time this morning it was, it was one, two o'clock. And he said, "Well, how do you go about getting all these people to show up and help?" And I said, "You know, quite honestly, you just, it happens. You know, they're all, they all trained together, they work together. You know, we're all part of the Homeland Security Group. And when they see that happening, everybody comes to everybody's aid." And he asked me why there were no more people in the shelter than what there was. I said, "Because, you know, I guess for Kansas, people go to their neighbors and their relatives, and they take care of each other. They'd rather stay with the neighbors than they would go in a shelter with, you know, and sleep on a cot. That's just the way it works." And it's just, I can't explain it. That's just, I guess that's Kansas, I don't know.
And, you know, I think too, with our emergency department and Chansey, they're, you know, sometimes you wonder, you know, what does a person do in that position because you have so much in planning? And yet, when you do have an instance like this, that planning goes a long ways.
It's there, it's absolutely.
As far as being prepared and responding.
Yeah, that's true.
But I was impressed, like, last night, I know you had sent me a text and a little bit of an update and, you know, mentioned that Sherry was down here doing work. And I mean, just as soon as, you know, things started breaking loose, things, we had people on the ground.
Unfortunately, this isn't our first rodeo when it comes to this. I wish I could say it was, but it's not. And we just kind of kicked into gear, tried to cover all bases, so.
But you might mention too, that our county road crews will be helping out townships where it's needed and if there's equipment.
And we did have them, of course, we had, Martin was out immediately, especially over by Chapman, where we had road blockage and houses damaged. And we had crews out, actually had one, two-man crew out throughout the night, moving barricades for West Dar, when they were on our roads, removing power lines and stuff. We had to put barricades up so that they weren't trying to fight traffic to it. So we had a couple of those guys out, and they're out today helping remove debris off township roads on a couple of townships that have said they need some assistance. So, yeah, it's all hands on deck, and all the departments get involved, so. We often, I guess we often wonder about the software costs, and software programs are very expensive for departments like GIS. But to be able to put data together like Sherry has in a few hours this morning, that was compiled by the people on the scene at the local command post out of the transfer station last night, and get, produce lists of the houses and addresses and the damages, is pretty remarkable. There's agencies that that takes weeks to do, so we're able to do it in a matter of a couple hours, so. But we will continue to be busy the rest of the week, so.
Yeah, well, we just hope that we don't have any more tornadoes and...
Hope for the best, yes. As far as other stuff going on, we, prior to last night, we were, we've been dealing with the sewer issues. Throughout, all that's, got that dug up, did have bad line. It was no surprise, a lot of ruts. We replaced the water line from coming out of the kitchen area as well. It was quite a mess. Had four different types of water line in about a four-foot section that had been replaced and patched. So it became obvious that it was just best to replace the whole line while we were doing the sewer line. So the sewer line itself was also completely filled with grease, I mean, completely, I don't know how it was grating. But, and we are installing a grease trap now, that never had one before, so. They were still planning on having that completed or at least close to it by midday tomorrow. So I don't know that we really had any surprises, it's going fairly well. Key Road, John had gone out and met with showing representative on Key Road. Key Road has acknowledged that there's some cracks there that shouldn't be, and they are agreeable to go out and get those cracks healed and filled and appropriately dealt with as part of the contract with their apologies. And they did, he did send a nice message that said that they wished the whole situation hadn't occurred, and they want to stand behind it and make sure that when we walk away, that everybody's happy. So they're going to have a crew full to do some cracks in and work on those cracks. We very much appreciate that from them. And then I'm just going to let you know, we did have a complaint on some tires. Actually, the house we looked at when we were on our tour, by the church up there, we thought it was pretty good, we didn't look at the other side. There's about 100-plus tires stacked up.
Southside.
On the, yeah, southeast side here. And so we contacted KDHE, they had taken the lead enforcement on that, sent that person a letter, and given until, I think it's the end of June, to get those all removed because that's a violation of their regulation. And so we thought everything was good, was quite as sweet as we thought it was. And I was going to tell you, Doug, when I went across a few minutes ago to check my name, Doug had emailed and said we didn't need you the day. He was going to, he's out helping the Henson family at their house, which was destroyed last night, so that he wasn't going to be here today. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Laverne, you might make notice, our work session will start at eight o'clock.
Yes, we are getting into the budget process and our June 2 meeting. We will be starting to, starting with the outside agencies come in and present their budgets requests. And it looks like we've got four of them scheduled for our next meeting on June the 2nd. And we will be continuing to do that every Thursday at eight o'clock. Looks like clear up to the middle of July anyway, so. It's that time of year when we...
But to begin.
Janelle's been, like I say, working with the departments here also on budgets so that we can compile all that information and try to come up with a budget for next year. Okay, notices and communications.
Thanks, I... I will.
This is an invitation from Central Kansas Mental Health Association. They're open house Wednesday, June 8th, from 12:30 to 2:00 p.m. in Salina. It's for light refreshments and take a quick tour of our facility and learn more about Central Kansas Mental Health. We do have a letter from NACO. This year, NACO's annual conference is going to be July the 22nd to the 25th in Los Angeles County, California. Anyway, this letter, if we wanted to have a voting delegate there, apparently if we don't have a paid registered person at the conference, we can't have a voting delegate unless we have a person there. That's just for our information. The KDGE is the usual permit renewals, agriculture permit renewals. And the one that's listed in here, I got it on there. The one that's listed in here is for Rodney Anderson, and it is just a renewal for the amount of livestock and hogs that he has on his cattle and hog operation. That's at the bar. This other one is our letter, the permit from KDGE. And it's for the transfer station, and says that this letter is, shows that our permit number and that we are in compliance, so. Did Randy get one of those?
Sure, yes.
This from Kansas State University, the ag economics department. But this is also through the extension service that they put together, the fiscal conditions and trends of our county. And it's, it's got some very good data in here that if we have another work session and have time to look through that, they give us, each one of us a hook. Did you get one? So like I say, I think it'd be beneficial that we look at that and during a work session, maybe, they said they wouldn't even come out to go over it with us if we felt like we needed to do that. The other two things, just the NACO County newsletter, and then also a magazine here Okay, on to the other business, we have three items here to take care of today. First one is consider request from Thunderstruck Bumpers for property tax abatement.
This is the issue that Case and Brown came in and talked to, the request he talked to you about two weeks ago, where Thunderstruck has started business in Abilene, and he had requested a property tax abatement for incentive, incentive, I guess, if you will. So this is the agreement that I'd set out to review. Essentially, what it does is, since he doesn't qualify for typical or traditional abatement because of his donation to the Great Plains Theater, this is an agreement to, for the county to return his property taxes to him each year in the same fashion as we would a typical abatement with a 10% increments for a period of 10 years. So it started with 100% return, and then 90, 80, 70, and so on, so.
Yeah, we, I've had this contract to look over, and like I say, it's pretty much the standard.
It does follow the county, current county policy that we have of 10% incremental.
You might, well, what we're talking about now is, we've required the reporting requirements like the city, so we don't have to duplicate up for that.
Yeah, the city's done the same thing.
Right.
Their's a little bit different on the percentages.
But we get the report.
But it does require an annual report from the applicant to ensure that they are providing the number of jobs and fulfilling their obligation over the lifespan of the agreement. And I left it intentionally the same as the city's so that he only has to do one report and just provide a vote on it, so.
Okay, do you hear motion for the...
Move economic development agreement with Thunderstruck as presented in the contract.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
I just mentioned that, you know, I think it's important where you have a business like this that is part of our base as far as job creation and having jobs. And it looks like they also have opportunity to expand. So, you know, certainly this is something that maybe benefits them right now, but also has quite an impact as far as our local economy, and so I'm pleased we're doing this.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, most would carry. Guess I'm the only one that has to sign that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a copy.
There's two copies, we need to sign, so.
I've got an original copy there too.
Do you need, you need this one or not?
I need two of them, so I didn't matter which one to sign.
Okay, I'll sign two.
Item, pass it on them, Barb, then.
The next item is to consider the resignation from Louis Oddie as Holland Township clerk. I guess he's just retiring more or less, or?
Well, there's some switching going on. The treasurer wasn't going to run, so he was going to file for treasurer. So they got somebody to fill his position.
I see.
I move accept the resignation of Louis Oddie as Holland Township clerk.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, most would carry. So then we have to consider the appointment of William Baloo.
I think that's how you say it.
As the Holland Township clerk.
So move.
I'll second it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, most would carry. Okay, did we have any?
The only other thing we have is the delegation of authority agreement. Chansey just spoke to you briefly about for the IMP team.
Okay.
And I don't know, I guess, did he explain what that was to you? I had stepped out.
No, he didn't.
Okay. Well, we have an incident management team that has come in from the north central, or northeast region of Kansas to assist us today. And what this is, is an agreement that delegates them the authority to work on our behalf to help our emergency responders. And... And basically, it gives them the authority to work for us. There's no cost to us, it's all through mutual aid. We have to provide them things like workspace and if their mobile command trailer needs fuel to operate the generator, who knows, if you're running meals that they needed, which we have Rid Cross providing, things like that. But it's just a legal document that gives them the authority to come here and operate Dixon County since they're not employed by us.
Does it stay the timeframe or?
It starts as of today, and we've left the ending timeframe open for whenever we get done with the incident. I would anticipate it would just be for today.
Unless we have another instance.
Let's hope that it's just for today. And I've got two copies, so we can, we'll get them, their team leader will sign it as well, and then I'll bring back one for Barb to file and give them one. But I will say that we're extremely fortunate to have help and support like this to come in and help us because we couldn't do it on our own by any means.
Okay, so I'll move that we give approval for the incident management team to delegate the authority for their assistance in this agreement.
Second.
The move is second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Kathy, we did videotape our earlier meeting this morning if you want to wind up, but it was just to get the emergency.
Declaration. It might be the shortest weekend ever had.
Is there any more on the agenda?
Nope, nothing else.
I move adjourned.
I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You now.